Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Wednesday, April 6th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Good evening. Thank you for all those in the audience. We have a few people and those people on Zoom. Dennis Maroni is traveling. Unfortunately, couldn't make it back in time. And we have a few people under the weather, Tara Worms, Sarah Parent, and Jill McCammon, but they're joining us via Zoom. So thank you for doing that. So real quick on the chairman's report, just a good luck, go Blue wave to the state finals, the boys hockey team versus Notre Dame, West Haven up in Quimbyak and Hamden tonight. So be rooting for them. And also, I would like to say, I went to the Addams Family production Saturday night. I saw some other board members there, John Seeny, Julie Best, whose daughter is the grandmother. And to Mr. Sorensen and the team and the high school students, just incredible job. I mean, the talent up there in the theater department is just incredible. It was one of the most enjoyable productions I've been at. So we've got theater, we've got music, choir, and sports. It's the full package and academics on top of that, I guess.
I guess.
I guess, kind of. So again, well done to the whole team and the theater production, and good luck to the boys tonight. So with that, Michelle, I will turn it over to public comment.
Good evening. For participants in person, please wait for the chairperson to acknowledge and call each participant to the microphone. For participants via Zoom, please click the raised hand option. The facilitator will acknowledge and unmute each participant. For all participants, please state your name and address for the record log. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Are there any in-person public comments?
Let's see, is there anyone in person that wants to speak? Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Amy Zerby, Nine More House Drive. As I have mentioned before, Darien High School is in the middle of the NEASC reaccreditation process. The Portrait of the Graduate plays a major role in this process and is required by NEASC. Our Portrait of the Graduate incorporates DEI into the curriculum. You all need to support our Portrait of the Graduate. Extricate yourselves from your political parties while wearing your Board of Ed hats. Your party leader should have no role in our public schools. Last week, I listened to the Norwalk Axe Youth Town Hall. The panel was primarily composed of Black students from three local high schools, including Bryan McMahon High School, P Tech Norwalk, and Darien High School. Everyone on this board should watch this meeting. All of the students said that they experienced racism, some every day. When asked what the schools can do for them, they said that the staff needs to be trained in DEI. The teachers need to know how to speak with students about racism and how to respond to racism when they see it. Their request for DEI should not be seen as political, as someone like to believe. I implore you to remove your political lenses when acting as a Board of Ed member. You cannot help these students until you do so. To the administration, the students repeatedly stated that they have no one to talk to at DHS when they experience racism. They need trained staff to speak with, someone who is easily accessible. Our Black students feel ignored. You need to help these students. One of the best statements from the discussion was when a student said that we need to normalize uncomfortable conversations. I believe that this statement is especially relevant because in this current climate, some people want to avoid uncomfortable conversations. This avoidance is harmful to our Black students and will not prepare students as they enter the real world. DEI is a vehicle to enable these conversations. We need to have uncomfortable conversations. We need DEI, and we need the vision of the graduate. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Sure, please come up to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kiana Lee, and I'm a senior student at Darien High School in Fitch Academy. Last week, I was a participating panelist in a virtual town hall discussion between students at Darien High School and Bryan McMahon High School about race relations and what we can do to improve our communities. Unfortunately, racism is a regular occurrence for many students of color in Darien, including me. My experience at Darien High School has been unwelcoming, to say the least. My experiences, my experience is significantly different from my peers because I'm a Black woman attending a predominantly white school. My first encounter with racism at Darien High School was during the Pledge of Allegiance. I do not stand for the pledge at school for my own personal reasons, as I have every right to do so. After the pledge was finished, I was told by a white male student that if I could not stand for the pledge, then maybe I should go back to my own country. My country is America. I come from Pennsylvania. Sadly, it was not a surprise that this incident was not properly handled by Darien High School, and it's infuriating to my family and I. This is just one of many examples of the racism that goes on here in Darien. So many families are unaware of it because they do not share the same lived experiences as people of color, or simply don't care enough to acknowledge these issues. One of my main comments at the virtual town hall meeting last week was that talking about race relations seems so difficult for many people in Darien. Too often, people quickly resort to defensiveness because they're uncomfortable, especially when discussing race. I think the way we're taught to define racism makes it difficult for some people to understand. For example, any suggestion today that someone is complicit in racism, or that something reflects racism, can be seen as insulting, which leads people to become defensive. My belief is that if we, as a community, understand racism not simply as mistreatment or prejudiced beliefs, but as a system that we're all socialized into, then we can start to identify problematic racial patterns and actually grow as a community. I'm here tonight with one wish, and that is for families in our community to continue having uncomfortable conversations. Educate your children about racism and the role it plays in so many lives, and identify the unconscious biases within yourself you may need to work on so that we can all be in this together. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming out and speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Sure, thank you. Please come up to the podium. Just state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Armel Jacobs. I am at 12 Fitch. I came mostly just to support, but I do feel moved to say that that was extremely heroic. And that may not read that way because she's so poised and amazing. But it's not easy for anyone to talk about these issues. It's especially difficult for people of color living in a predominantly white town to speak out on these issues, much less being a teenager, where her focus should be go to school, learn, rise, you know, achieve. But that's difficult to do in certain circumstances, like the one she described. I also want to say that experiences like Kiana's, I've heard of, I've heard of a lot of them, unfortunately. It's not uncommon from my discussions with some students of color in this town. In the older set, it comes out sort of aggressive like that. It's instances of aggression. But I also want to speak to the younger kids. My daughter's only in kindergarten, and when we're together, questions about me, about me being her mom, about our skins being different, it's not uncommon. And that's not a bad thing. I think the questions are a wonderful thing. And when I'm there, I can give it context, and I can say, I know, look at how different we are. Isn't that amazing that I'm her mother? What a beautiful, interesting world we live in. I can give it context when I'm not there. We have not empowered our teachers to give these kids context for these discussions. So I'm here again to ask you guys to please give that some, not just thought, but some action as well, because it's an issue not just in the high school, it's throughout. And no one can blame these kids, you know? They're living in a town where families like mine are not typical. They don't see people like us. So that's my, that's my plea. I want to thank Kiana, and I also want to ask you guys to please do what you can to help give these kids some context. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking. Anyone on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for speaking this evening. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everybody, and thank you for being present. Thank you for speaking. And also looking for good news from the boys hockey team this evening. And I pass on again to the cast and crew of Addams Family because it was terrific, as the board chair has said. We did host today a visit from the Wilton Public Schools, and they were visiting to review our math program, our KDAH eight math program, and the components of that program, the teaching, instructional practices associated with it. They spent the day both at the elementary schools and also at the middle school. Math placement letters have gone out for students' transition from grades five to six. Want to just thank the directors and the host family and students of the ABC program for their invitation to spend an evening for a dinner with the kids Friday night. That was a very enjoyable evening. It was, it was good to learn more about the program. Student representatives on the Board of Education, we have, it took a wee bit longer just to complete that particular process, but we anticipate of bringing a senior and a junior to the April 6th meeting. The final step in that process is for me to meet with them and the board chair and I to do an orientation before the April 6th meeting. We will open it up again, the same sort of process at the end of this year for the reelection of a junior for the following year. The robotics intermural, the first robotics intermural competition will be in May. So the kids are eagerly participating and getting their robots ready for that. Had the opportunity today to go and visit one of those clubs at the elementary school. It's just terrific of what they're doing. I also want to commend the high school because they did, they have provided some resources to the kids at the elementary school level. Just reminded the NASC Visiting Committee, the collaborative visit, which is really just a small group of people who will come on April 4th and 5th. So that's Monday and Tuesday after the vacation. Just a reminder that the actual visit itself isn't until spring 2014. This is just a small, a few people from the committee who just come and have discussions with representatives. There will be some board participation on that. I'll get the actual details of it and communicate accordingly. I do want to thank and just point out a couple of our students, our elementary and middle school students who at the weekend participated in a fundraiser for child, child cancer cures, and that was part of the St. Baldric's Foundation. That, the students involved, Ethan Lubin, Owen Butler, Jack Mitchell, and Thomas Keith, fourth graders, sixth graders, eighth graders, currently they've raised $25,000, which is absolutely amazing. And there's a lot of people have participated as part of the community and the greater community. So congratulations, because it's not something easy to do, to do that, to do that on their own. And that's just tremendous. So congratulations. Thank you to those members of this high school, Shirley and her staff, for their participation at the Unified Sports Basketball Tournament on March 14th. That was at Ludlow High School, and they appreciated everybody's participation and support. I also want to thank the Axe Ridge, the expo that took place. That was a wonderful experience from our architect and our construction management team for their time and efforts in making that an educational experience for our students. At the Royal School, a math and focus, they had a math and focus developer with fourth and fifth grade teachers doing professional development. Congratulations, there's 22, I won't read out the names of kids, but there's 22 students, elementary students, who came first place in the Music for Youth Graphics Contest. The design will be displayed at the Dallas Brass Concert on April 2027. So we congratulate them on their award and recognition. March 28th will be the next DEI meeting. Mr. Tramburg has communicated that accordingly. And our Royal students, it's interesting that there's a lot of activities happening now, and it's sort of indicative of being back to school in as normal a situation as possible. Our elementary schools were able to participate at the Bridgeport Sound Tigers baseball game, doing some singing over the weekend. The eighth grade, the last time I shared that the eighth graders were working with the Blues and Beyond Group to gain a better understanding of Black history and the evolution of music in the United States as a culmination event. And there are, some eighth grade students have composed their own blues lyrics, and they will be premiered tomorrow at a dinner and show night at 6:30 PM at Zoom at the middle school. So if you go on the middle school website, you should be able to find that. Some of our eighth grades, if you get a big chance to walk through middle school, have put their own personal stamp on a brick in the second floor there, and it's made that, it's made the place come alive a little bit. So we can thank them for that. Also want to appreciate that middle school and the high schools' effort to do a coat and blanket drive for Ukrainian families. That's a sad situation, to say the least. It was nice to see our students, our secondary school students reach out. There are a couple of Zoom meetings that are actually taking place and are, or continue to take place. The ELP, the Kindergarten Articulation Parent Coffee, that was today. That's also on the Special Education page of the district website. This evening, we have College and Support Services. It's a panel led by Megan Emanuelson. So that is happening this evening. It'll also be posted. The DBT with the fourth and the fifth series of emotional regulation, that will be on Thursday of this week and also posted. And my last recognition is to congratulate Mr. Tramburg. Yesterday, Mr. Tramburg successfully defended his doctoral dissertation. So I'm pleased this evening to recognize his achievement and to offer our congratulations through a new nameplate for Dr. Christopher Tramburg. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chris. Great, thank you, Dr. Adley. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 2nd, 2022? Mrs. Best may have a second. Mr. Brown, all those in favor? That is unanimous, except for Dennis. Thank you. We will move on to Board Committee reports. Any Board Committee reports? Mrs. Akman?
The Policy Committee met, and it didn't make it on this agenda, but the next agenda it will. We've done the administrative series of the policy review. We have recommendations to make to the Board, I guess, at our next meeting of what to repeal, what to hold in place, and what we may want to modify. And then we will move on to our next series. So I know we'll talk about the policy audit later, but it is well underway, and we have recommendations for the Board, at least on that series at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
And the Finance Committee met St. Patty's Day for its monthly meeting. I think we have two recommendations for transfers that Ms. Ruda will cover. And then without Dennis here, I'll just mention that Facilities Committee met, I believe, two weeks ago now, and covered some of the issues around the Darien High School lights, which will be forthcoming.
With things done to the board, correct. Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. McCammon, did you want to give any update on Hinley Royal and Homes?
Yes, the Hinley Homes and, thank you, Duke, the Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee is off and running. We've been to the Board of Selectmen and Finance to receive our, an initial appropriation so that we can get the ball rolling. We did receive an appropriation from the Board of Finance's Capital Reserve Fund, which is to get us started on, in particular, hiring a consultant to support us with the grant process at the state level. And we are planning to meet with the state in the near term. And beyond that, it also includes testing and surveys and things like that so that we can keep going. We are planning to attend our TM meetings in April and in early June to receive our second and third appropriations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. All right, we'll move on to Presentations and Discussions, Public Schools Status Update. Dr. Adley?
Thank you. I don't know if Alicia Kasucci is on, on the screen or not, but Alicia, I believe was joining us this evening.
Not see Alicia on yet.
Okay, well, we'll just, we'll just continue then, okay? So there's only two, two items to discuss this evening. So I would suggest that we'll continue with this sort of process if it peters out, so to speak, and there's less to talk about. There's more, there's less than less to talk about in many ways. But we'll, we'll continue with the Board's understanding. We'll continue to keep it as an agenda item, just as we, to close out the school year, as opposed to just, just in case things happen or otherwise. And as you see this evening, there's less slides to talk about. We did see, whenever, let's just say we did not see, whenever we removed a mass, a spike in cases, that didn't happen per se. There has been a general drop around the, the community itself, and there has been a drop of cases actually in the school system. So that's, that is the general pattern of the information itself. If you look at this here, the last couple of presidents we have done was, the town of Darien was at 126, and the last time we did this was at 77. Now it's 31. The, the cases per 100,000 was at 41, 25, and now it's down to 10. These are the cases here at the moment that you can see. The last full week was, was eight cases. And these, these are the respective data points for the, the town of Darien for the month of March. Not, not finished it, but you can see again, all of these are, are declining cases. So that's really, that's really the summary statement for it. The weekly testing, we have over probably about 250 adults, stroke students who are participating still in the weekly PCR testing. We're going to suggest that we will continue to do that as long as the service is, is being requested. I would say analysis of the last couple of weeks, four weeks or so, it's one case, no case, one case that has come out of those PCR testing. So that's, that's the general pattern. There, there are general respiratory issues that actually people are getting over now that the weather's changing a little bit. That's not from me, that's from Dr. Keneffek. And we are, we're up and running, and for the most part, very healthy. And so that's, so that's a good thing. But there may be less, less things to report back, but that, that will open up for board discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Any board comments or questions?
I got a quick one.
Sure, Mrs. Seeny.
The testing, are you going to continue that based on demand, or is there a plan to, throughout the end of the school year?
I think at the, at this point, the team is looking at, that's provided for the, there seems to be a general consistency of the number of people who are utilizing it and the need for it, whatever the reason for. So I think there's, there's no reason why we, it's not a big inconvenience at this particular point. Actually, we're finding more efficient ways to do it. So our, our recommendations, let's just continue it for those people who find it a useful service.
Through the end of the school year?
Correct.
Thank you.
But not longer, right?
Yeah, I don't see, no.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
So it's just inertia at this point? We've been doing it, we're just going to keep doing it, even though it's kind of not useful at this point? Just, I'm just trying to understand the reason why we're going to continue.
Well, I won't speak for the parents or for the teachers themselves, but it was provided as a resource, the state is providing it as a resource. And as long as it's serving a purpose for some people, I.
So there's a core group of about 250 people that are coming to get it done on a weekly basis?
Correct.
I guess you, you'll continue to monitor that number.
Yes, I mean, if it, if it completely falls away, then there's probably room to suggest.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Best?
Thank you. I was just going to comment as far as continuing with the update. Well, hopefully, it doesn't have to get any longer. I think it's still nice to just reassure people that we are still paying attention. We don't want to just stop the conversation entirely. Thanks.
I do see Alicia there. Welcome back, Alicia. I think I may have stolen your thunder just a wee bit, so I apologize about that. If you have any, any general remarks, I'm sure the Board will save them.
I'm sorry, I was visiting with a friend, and I just realized I was late. So my apologies. Thank you. I'm happy to be back.
Good. Good to see you, Alicia.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you. Jill, or Tara, or Sarah? I can only see Sarah. Any hands raised? All right, good. Thank you. All right. Good, we will move on. I would suggest everyone continue to stay healthy, and the warm weather and spring is here. So it's all good news. Then we will keep it as an agenda item, even if it might be brief. I will move on to B, a bridge presentation and discussion on Darien High School's second semester enrollment distribution report. Dr. Chris Tramburg.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the congratulations. I appreciate it. I, on behalf of the high school administration, they prepared this report, but they are all at hockey game this evening. So I am, I am representing them through this report. So the first slide you have is the mean class size. The theme that you'll notice throughout are, any differences that you see are largely because 2020, 2021 school year was our COVID year. So there were some adjustments to room use, class sizes, science teachers weren't teaching labs. So all of those things affected some of those class size numbers. So for a point of comparison, it might be a little bit more accurate to look at 1920 to 2122. But we do have the spring to spring report as the final column. And as you can see, there are no volatile numbers there. So that is a good thing. As far as the teacher average class size, again, the variance goes to COVID, but these numbers are awesome, being that we are comfortable with. The distribution of class size shows the number of classes that are under 16, then in the range of 16 to 20, and then over 20. And that same theme continues. The class sizes under 10 in English, math, and social studies, that's where the numbers are highest. Those are the result of classes that happen in a lab setting. The other classes that are under 10 are typically AP classes with a small number, or for students that are finishing a sequence that have taken several classes. As far as the number of large class sizes, we went from four in the fall to five in the spring. The addition in the spring is because of a half-year elective that has 25 students in it, and that is a neuroscience elective. And the four from the fall, no one dropped. So in that five are the same four classes in the spring. And the other good news is all of our, over the 25 or more are all at 25. A counselor student load, according to the department and the administration, they are happy with the load as it is right now and where they lie in the dirt. And the observations, there are no significant changes, the comfortability with the counselor loads, and the average class size is definitely something to be proud of. And the administration appreciates that as a priority of the Board. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Sure, open up to board questions or comments. Mrs. Akman?
Just during the budget, we heard about heavy loads in physical education. What are those proving out to be? It looks like we have certain sections over 24 students. How many over, and then another slide, so we have no classes over 25, but the only breakdown is for academics. So.
So of the over, that none of them are over 25 right now is my understanding. But with the anticipated increase in enrollment with the freshmen, that's where there could be a change. But I can confirm that for sure, since that's not listed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Any other questions or comments on the Board? Right, thank you, Dr. Tramburg. We'll move on to Interim Progress Report on 2021, 2022 Board Goals and Objectives. Dr. Adley?
Michelle, thank you very much. We make it as big as possible for the Board. You need to go to the spring, please. Okay, thank you. I am not going to, I'm not going to read all of these. I'll just pause at the moment. These are the respective updates at this particular point. There's one more update to be presented. So I'm also looking at this as the work that the Board, yourselves, and together, that we have engaged in. Some of the updates are, reflect a little bit also the strategic plan in some cases. But if there's any comments on any of those or other updates, if you think I've left out on behalf of the Board or otherwise, I'm happy to, happy to have that discussion. But I think that the Board has done an excellent job in terms of the District Safe Return Plan, the various iterative. I think that the board has done an excellent job in terms of the, the district safe return plan, the various iterations and so on. But I'll leave it at that for the moment and we'll, we'll pause at one and.
Yep. Any questions on one? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Adlin, goal two.
I do have a question on goal two, based on some of what we heard tonight. And I was at that town hall meeting, hearing kids feel, say they feel that their needs are not being met in the classroom and that they feel different. If we're, and that they'd like more teacher support, if we're ensuring kind of rigorous, rigorous teacher in learning. Do we have any plans around that? I mean, I don't want any kid to feel as if somehow that their, their needs aren't being met or heard in the classroom such that it's impeding their learning. Do you gasp about two?
No, I said we were going to goal two. Is this round goal two?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
He hadn't spoken yet, so it's all good.
Oh.
Yeah. All right. So we have, if there, we have Tara's question on goal two. Anything you want to update us on, Dr. Adlin?
So I appreciate those concerns and those concerns are real. And those are all of those issues we are actively, we're actively trying to address, including the most recent comments that have been made. So this is an, this is an ongoing effort, collective effort that we have. And I don't want to trivialize in any manner because it's clearly a priority for us. Clearly, we can't go quick enough in many ways. And that, that's a difficulty with this work, but we want to be seen to be responsive, both for the recent comments and suggestions and ideas, and also the ones that we've been working on for some time now. So I believe that we're committed to doing the work. We have a plan in place to do the work. We'll continue to be proactive and reactive to issues that come up. But we have a plan in place and we're, we're trying to execute on that plan.
So just as a follow up, I would say that I, I believe it's taped. I think anyone can watch it. And because we had our students really speaking about their experience and, you know, it is only the students who are at that that could speak about their experience. But I, I do think that there's something more for the administration than the board there, because we can't actualize in the classroom. But they were incredibly well spoken and very thoughtful in their comments. So I would urge, as I see goals of providing professional development and diversity, equity, inclusion, for there to be some outreach to these children, because they at least have a perspective as we're making plans going forward to find here a final year goal. And are we kind of hearing their perspective and matching, determining whether that's where we can match and then matching professional development to some of those needs? Hearing kids from four different schools talk about things and especially Darien kids talk about their experience in the classroom. It was powerful. You know, I'm not in the classroom, so I can't contextualize it, but I it would be well advised, I think, for the administration to reach out.
So that's, that, that, I can't confirm that it's actually happened. The intent is for that to happen, and it may have already happened in some capacities. I'm not sure with all students or not on the, on the panel, but, but certainly there has been follow up discussion about reaching out to students who were part of that panel, yes, agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Sorry, Mrs. It was brought up at our finance committee, public comment, and a few of us tried to find it and went on the link and the link was broken. So can somebody pass that, that event around? We weren't made aware, at least on our Board of Ed emails about this event earlier. It wasn't a school sponsored event, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No, I just saw it on social media, so I did not see it in any sort of official capacity from DPS.
I heard it was a powerful meeting.
It was, it was powerful. And, and look, people arrange their own things and have their own events. And I literally logged on fifteen minutes late because I saw it, but it was powerful. And I think if we're talking about ensuring rigorous teaching and learning and our kids are talking about it, it's at least worthwhile. Or not at least worthwhile, it's very worthwhile to hear their perspective and all perspectives on this matter.
Yeah, so somebody thank you.
I do want to reiterate, we want to hear our students' voice and we need to hear our students' voices through this process. So those expressions are welcomed.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Tranberg. Goal three, oversee implementation of the district strategic
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs. Tara.
We don't have a voice, but I will just echo that, that, that town hall was really powerful. And I would just extend that to maybe reach out to middle school students. And even fourth and fifth grade students are more than capable of sharing their experiences as well. I think there's definitely some power in that as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Tara. Goal three, oversee implementation of the district strategic plan.
I think we've talked, you know, a lot about the strategic plan, but you can see, well, again, you can see the, the, I think there's a T that's missing there from strategic plan through weekly student tells comments.
Any questions on goal three? Good, thank you. Goal four, advance the district's elementary school building projects. I think we got an update from Jill, great kickoff to the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee. They've also hired Dave Cravenzola from APO and G to guide them in the initial paperwork around the grant, which is due on June thirty first. So that's really kept things moving forward there. And there was a tour as part of the tour of schools. We ended at the Ox Ridge Elementary School, and I think people were very pleased to see the progress. And we are on track for a move in almost a day after school ends. And that school will be open as phase one for September, so that's exciting. Any questions or comments on the building projects? Yes, Mrs. Best?
Thank you. And yes, that was really exciting to see the X Ridge progress. I hadn't been there in ages. There's been some discussion around this, but I just wanted to reiterate, it kind of hit home on the tour of facilities, the importance of making sure that we do have members of each school's community involved in those projects. I understand it's, we've, we've lumped them all together, but we want to make sure that there's Henley Homes and Royal input as we, as that moves forward. However, we can affect that now that there's a building committee in place.
Julie, the PTO, this is Jill, the PTOs were asked to send an ex officio member to sit from each of the three schools. I believe we've received two. And then there are multiple, although the building committee really is structured with people with, in most cases, relevant building experience or government experience. We do have myself as a Henley parent and a number of homes parents. So we have made attempts to make sure that that's happening. If there's something else that people still feel is not happening, would be happy to hear something more specific.
That's, that's great. Thank you. And I guess I would just add things like I know that Ox Ridge would go back and have, you know, an evening session at the school and take parents through what the plans were. And now that has to be done times three for these projects, obviously, because it's three times the communities.
Sitting in on the meeting here, they have a whole strategic communication
Right, to keep the whole community involved. Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you. I don't need to labor it, but thank you.
Good questions, thank you.
Quick, quick question, and since Jill is on, just so I understand the structure, we now have three individual building committees with one umbrella building committee. Is that correct?
So that what the selectmen did was they actually received the request to make three, but they did create only one, is my understanding via resolution. That said, we have to operate as if we are three. So for example, when we go to the RTM and ask for bonding, we will receive, we will use three different bonding resolutions. But there, there is one building committee who has the charge of all three building committees.
Okay. And just for what it's worth, because I know it'll, like, if there's building changes, it'll come back to us. I think the state's requiring three. So as you guys talk, make sure we know who we're receiving ad specs from, which building committee, because the state is requiring we have three.
Exactly, yeah. We'll set it up as three individual projects. Yeah. And they're, they're doing similar to what we did at Ox Ridge. They're going up and having a prep meeting with the state, which was very, very well received when we did it with Ox Ridge.
Thank you for the comments.
We'll move on to goal five, completing policy audit.
So you'll see that in lots of these goals, the board has accomplished lots of these, even though we've, we've still got one of the seasons still to go. I'll just point out one of them here that, you know, the board agendas aligned to board policies. We'll have to see how that goes. We're working through the, the series itself. That's a, that's a, that's a challenge even to start with, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. But I just wanted to point out like something maybe we haven't sort of done, so to speak.
Board questions or comments? Goal six, excuse me, enhance district communications.
So I, I think that the board and continuing to offer these online opportunities even during a time whenever we're, we're back to normal, so to speak, is, is a good step. I think the idea of the committee on the, the communication probably is something just still outstanding that we could try and get a wee bit of traction on it is probably, I would say, one of the only sort of things process wise that we probably have to kick into gear.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, do you have any thoughts about, you know, how you would kick off that communications committee? Would be part of policy? Do you have any plans yet or?
Alan and I have touched base. I think originally we had it as part of policy. I think we need to have a conversation at the board table to see if it's at a point now where it breaks out as a separate committee. So I think we can get that as an agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. All right. Any other questions or comments? Goal seven, increase engagement in professional development.
So I may have missed some things that the board have participated in. So if you've participated in certain things that I have mentioned here, just generally speaking, you can certainly add to those things. The one thing I think we, we need to, and I should take responsibility too for this, to help the board, that, that if we can just wrap up the CES representative council, the person who's going to represent us on that representative council, that, that should be an easy thing for, for us to do.
That's appointed by the chair.
Right, so it just
We'll do that, we'll do that tomorrow.
I think, I think that the board has taken
I mean, I've participated in the meetings, so, but, okay.
My only question on this one would be, and I think we have it under the safe return to school, but in terms of increasing engagement in professional development, I don't understand why it's like writing testimony to legislators. I just don't see that as professional development. You could put it under safe return schools. I think it's there. It just seems like an odd way to increase our professional development. Seems like one of our responsibilities.
Yeah, you could look at the guy, I put it there because you have executed on it and it was one of the measures that the board approved, like.
But is it professional development?
Yeah, there's a, but could you just scroll up a wee bit for me, please?
I think it's under, I think it's under safe return to school, so I'm comfortable with it there. I just didn't understand it as part of professional development.
So it was the last bullet there. Now you could say like, Alan, you probably put that in for us. I probably did, right? But, but you guys had a pass, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments around the board goals and objectives? You good too? All right. We'll move on to discussion and possible action on establishing a twenty twenty two Darien High School graduation date. Yay.
So I think it's a board general practice to wait to April to set this particular date. And I'm thinking that it's in the best interest of the community to set it as quickly as possible. There's no legal requirement to wait till April anymore. In fact, you can sort of do it at any particular time. So with the four inclement weather days up, which is at Friday, the seventeenth. And so I propose this evening for that as a consideration to set the graduation date.
What, what happens if there's another April snowstorm or?
So you can set, you can set that, that's why even though they can start at, you said at the start of the year, you can even set at the start of the year now, but you said at the start of the year and there's lots of days. Technically, our seniors are meant to come back. I mean, that's not going to happen, right? The, the legislation is silent on that and how they execute on that. So that's why it still seems reasonable to wait sometime. Technically, the answer is the student should come back to school, technically.
So if I asked Dr. Adlin a question, if we set it, we get another April snowstorm or something? It's said, but we technically have another day to make up. All right. So, yeah, let's keep it on Friday. So may I, any further discussion?
Can I just clarify? So, so graduation can be set one hundred and eighty days after the going in schedule, right? Like you have to, from the schedule we started with, you have to have completed one hundred and eighty days of school.
Yes.
So even if that changes, graduation can stay, but we can't lock in a last day of school because we have to actually have a hundred. I've gotten a few questions on that from community members, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So may I have a motion to approve Friday, June seventeenth as the twenty twenty two Darien High School graduation date? Mrs. Akman, second by Mrs. Best. All those in favor? That is unanimous with Dennis Maroney, Miss. Great, we're on our way to graduation. We will move on to discussion on February twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two financial report, possible action on proposed budget transfers. Mr. Rich Roodel?
So this is the financial report through February. We are showing a positive year end balance of six hundred and fifty one thousand, four hundred and ninety seven, or about point six one percent of the total budget. It is about three hundred, about three hundred thousand dollars higher than the previous month, and that's largely due to excess costs, which we'll talk about in a minute. But overall, general education RCs are a positive hundred and seven thousand. And then the special education RCs are a positive five hundred and forty three thousand, all of which is really related to excess cost reimbursement. The COVID and ARP grants are forecasted at just under one point one million, one million, twenty five thousand in the brand. And then there's been sixty one thousand dollars of transfers into RC twenty eight. Salaries are a positive balance of one hundred and sixty four thousand, primarily made up of salary savings and turnover of about fifty nine thousand. We do have some clubs and councils that are either not running or we have step savings for about nineteen thousand. We do have some student intern vacancies largely at the secondary level, forty eight thousand, part time help and RC twelve is forecasted at a deficit for sixty five hundred dollars. We do have some employees who are out on workers comp and we have part time employees filling in. That is one of the transfers for the board tonight. A portion of budget control also remains unspent at forty three thousand. Operating is negative by about fifty, sixty six thousand. Legal fees are trending positive by twenty six thousand. Various materials, consultant fees, auditing fees, travel and PD are positive twelve. We did put in as a placeholder, the library redesign architectural study for the high school, middle school and Tokadik. So if that does go forward, we have flagged that as a potential deficit. We are going forward, we'll bring a transfer to the board at a later date. We are flagging the deductible cost for Storm Elsa at ten thousand dollars. And then we have a deficit of contracted speech as we do have another SLP out on a long term leaving absence. And we have a contractor covering that individual. So we do have a recommended transfer to take the salary savings from that SLP to contracted speech. There we go. Fixed is positive by about thirty three thousand. We do have favorable balances in utilities, diesel fuel, and then some of the Kerma accounts, including property insurance, general liability and student accident. Revenue is the largest driver, positive five hundred and nineteen thousand. We are forecasting a reimbursement rate of eighty percent for excess costs. We did receive our first reimbursement at the end of February, and that amount is essentially what we have budgeted for the year. And we are getting another reimbursement in May. We'll know the final rate reimbursement rate probably within a month. But right now we are assuming eighty percent reimbursement. So the two transfers for approval are thirty five thousand dollars to contracted speech. And again, taking those savings from the vacant SLP salary line. And then the second one is to move the workers' compensation reimbursements from Kerma to the part time help account, which are used to cover those vacant employees.
Thank you, Rich. And I know that this is all presented at the finance committee meeting. Any questions or comments around the budget? Or the proposed transfers? All right, good, thank you. They have a motion to approve the February twenty twenty two proposed budget transfers. Mr. Seany, second by Mrs. Akman. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to action items. PAR report, Ms. Cion?
There, there are none, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. We'll move back, Michelle, to public comment. Anyone in our audience?
Lori Olson, sixteen Little Brook Road North. I am the co-chair of CDSP. I just have two comments. In this day and age when we're posting things on YouTube that maybe the board can talk about, and I don't know how this works. and I don't know how this works, people standing up here and giving their address to go live on a YouTube video for however long seems a privacy issue, in my opinion. And number two, I noticed that their students are still in, I can't remember, number three or number four. And so what's going on with the students sitting at the board? We're going into April, and so I don't know if we're still looking at student representatives.
Dr. Adlin gave an update earlier.
Oh, he did.
That they're coming on the board in April.
Sorry, I was at Board of Finance.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Michelle, anyone on?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, good. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Seany, second, Mrs. Best, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all, thanks for coming, thanks for tuning in, and have a good early evening.